I need to study it because you all did such a good job.
Who may skip to them first? Oh, I think we're ready to go. Due to the absence of the chairman and the vice chairman, we'll have to start the meeting and nominate a temporary chairman for this meeting. So I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'd like to nominate David Becker.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Welcome to our regular meeting in November. Brenda, would you call to order the roll?
Yes. Linda Anderson.
Here.
Jim Backlin. David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher. Rick Hantrell. Paul Cross.
Here.
Jim Thompson. Mayor Mae White.
Here.
Howard Wilson.
Here.
Okay, thank you, Brenda. We do have a quorum so we can proceed today. First of all, you've received the copy of the minutes of our regular meeting in October. Is there any discussion, additions or deletions to those minutes? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? Motion, the minutes, Carrie, thank you. Robert, you want to start our new business for today?
Sure. Our first agenda item, I don't see the applicants in the audience, so we'll go ahead and if it's all right, we'll jump to the second.
Sure.
Agenda item, then maybe they'll be here before we get into. The second agenda item of the first on our list today is 550 East Main Street. Applicants are David and Amy Hennington. They're requesting to remove the existing shingles, the roof and the metal roofing on top of the house, replace it with a consistent type of roofing material. In addition, they also want to, they have to do some repairing of the existing chimneys, and they'd like to rebuild them with the same style, in the same style that they are now, with the same brick, if at all possible. Also, they want to remove an existing fence, the fence system around their house, and replace it with new wooden fencing along the back, and some metal fencing around the side and the front. This property is located at the corner of East Main Street and University. The house was built in 1895 in the Queen Anne Colonial Revival style of architecture with the classical porch. It's got barge boards, and the roof was constructed with decorative shingles. It's a two-story structure with clapboard, and it's got a gable roof. It is a contributing structure in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. Again, I'll start with the roof. What they're wanting to do in agenda materials are some photographs of the house, and you may be able to see where there's a, part of the roof is metal and part of it's shingles. They would like that to be a consistent material because the weather has caused several problems inside the house with leaking water and damaging the sheet rock, and there's no telling what else. So, like I say, they're wanting to replace them with designer shingle, it's called an Atlas Storm Master Slate Shingle. And there's a brochure of, picture of the shingles in your agenda materials. And a sample shingle, they brought a sample shingle with them to let you review it. So after the roof, we can start with chimneys. There's two photos, there's chimneys of two, photos of two chimneys on your agenda materials. And they would like to keep the same, again, with the ravages of time, the chimneys have suffered a lot. They want to replace the bricks because the mortar has deteriorated so bad that they just can't tuck point it. So they'll have to, they'll have to bring them down to a certain point, and then put them back with the same materials, same brick, and some new mortar, and the same, they're looking to do the same style as they are now. And shortly, not too long ago, they experienced a home invasion, and they would like to prevent this from happening again. In order to do so, they would like to install fencing that would provide some security all the way around the house. Presently, they have a wooden privacy fence across part of the back. There's a little gap in between a shed and the existing fence, and they wish to replace that wooden fence with another wooden-type privacy fence with a, another, let's see, it's a shadow box, shadow box-type privacy fence. And around the side that's fronting on University Street, and also the side between the house and 540 East Main Street, they would like to replace some existing metal fencing with some new metal fencing. The new metal fencing, I believe it's going to be similar to the one that the Egley's have, it's right across the street. There's some photos in your example, in your agenda package, that show the fence that is on the Egley property. It's got the trifinial top, and they wish to have that around the side that's fronting on University Street, and they're, to go into their neighbor's house on 540. The applicants are in the audience to answer any questions, if you have any of them or myself, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Robert. Would either of you like to step up to the podium? So, we have a question. That way the folks that are viewing can also hear your response. Thank you. Does the commission have any questions, concerns, issues with any of the things that the Henningtons want to go, want to do?
I was curious when I read the specs about the shingles that you were talking about. In our information that came to us, it says slate shingles. Is that the color that's not shown on the chart we have?
I don't know the best way to, where's the best place to put the sample?
You can bring that up here if you want. You can throw it at us if you want.
It's kind of heavy. This is a, the architectural composite, this is the weathered wood, I mean, this is the actual color of the shingle and what it will look like, which we think will be really complementary to the color of the house.
Mr. Gray.
The slate refers more just to the color than, and the style with having the dog-eared corners, more than the actual composition of the shingles.
Okay, the style, all right.
These shingles have a lifetime warranty. They're rated a Class Four impact resistance for hail damage, and also rated for 140 mile an hour winds. So when we were looking for shingles to go on this house, we were looking for shingles to last basically the lifetime, for all intensive purposes of the house.
One question I had, in the photograph, they ever had photographs showing your extension of the fencing. It appears that you're going to put a gate in on your driveway?
Yes, sir.
Is that gate going to be the wrought iron fence, or is that going to be, it's going to be the wrought iron fence?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The only place we're looking at putting the wooden fencing is just along the back property line on the perimeter between, between our back property line and the apartment behind us, that hole behind us.
Words that mouth.
I'm sorry, yes, sir. Yes, it's just right now, it just, it doesn't completely line the entire back property line, it's just partial. We want to extend it all the way across the back, but the only place that the wooden privacy fence will be is there. And actually, I can hand these out, or you can. I made a typographical error in the materials that I submitted in terms of the style of the privacy fence. It said that the shadow box. I was just confused. We got quotes for several different styles, and for cost purposes, the one that we would like to go with is actually a capped privacy fence, which I brought pictures of. It's okay, I'll just bring them in.
Yes. Great.
So, no changes about where we want it, but just a little bit of a change in the style of the privacy fence.
One other reason we're going with this style fence versus the capped shadow box is there are some trees on the property line, and because of the way we'll have to do the fence, the way the arches would go, it wouldn't have a very even flow. By the time it got to those trees, it would have to stop, do a smaller section, and then start again. So with just the cap straight across the top, it'll just make it more consistent all the way through. We can go straight up to the trees, jump to the other side, and continue going without damaging any of the trees, or just have a consistent look.
Do I understand the height of all the fencing is five foot?
That is correct. Five foot on the iron fencing, and then on the wood fence, it would be six foot across the back.
Is the gate, is the gate, I have a question. Is the gate going to be similar to what the Egley's have?
Yes, very similar. That's called a rolled top. The difference would be, if you saw a continuous arch that was cut square in the middle, that would be the way our gate would be. So it would be one arc cut in half.
With the separation, okay.
With regard to the chimneys, are you planning to put them back exactly as they're built?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Have you had a mason to look, to look at this? Have they examined the area of the chimney below the roof line?
He went as far down as he could see on the roof line, then he went inside the house as well, from the inside up. And basically, all of the material below the roof line inside the house is still in very good shape. Just basically where the elements have just slowly over time deteriorated, the brick is what we'll need to tear down to. So, when looking for, it's very, it was very hard to find someone that would take the time to actually look at these chimneys and put them back the way we were. And we actually found a gentleman out of Nashville that has done several historic homes in Franklin and in Nashville to do it. So, he will actually tear down till about six inches below the roof line to get to solid brick, and then build back up. We actually are lucky to have some extra bricks on the property that came from the house and from that time, from chimneys that have been removed in years past. So we're very fortunate to have, if we do get into a situation where we need extra bricks, we already have some from the time period there that he said would be acceptable to use.
Wonderful. I was curious about that, too. I thought, I wonder where they found a mason who will still build chimneys? Now, are those working fireplaces?
I know, ma'am.
Okay.
Those are the original coal fireplaces, and none of those are in operation.
We did that same process with a couple of our chimneys, and it's worked out real well.
So, one thing that we were going to probably come back to at some point later after the chimneys, is capping them, it would probably just be a standard cap. And we didn't have a picture of that to go on top, but it's very similar to what's on the existing one. You'll see there's two chimneys, one smaller, one larger. We're going to do just a basic cap to cap it off with. I didn't have any pictures of that to put in.
You're going to paint it, aren't you?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. It'll all hopefully match the same color.
There are some factory-produced chimney caps that are made in a style that would complement the architecture of the house. I'm not suggesting that you ought to do that, but they're out there.
We were going to look at that after we get these two initial things done, and then probably come back and resubmit that once we find something that is to our liking.
Any other questions from the commission? I'll ask for a motion, then.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the application that's submitted.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hennington. Welcome to the neighborhood, and it's exciting to see that, be excited to see that new roof line.
Thank you.
Wonderful house.
Wonderful. All right.
When you come back with the caps, David, you might just call Robert and show him what you're going to do, and he might be able to approve that without having to come back to the commission.
Don't forget your.
Don't forget your shingle.
Okay, Robert, let's review the Park Circle address.
Okay. This property is 132 Park Circle. Excuse me. Owners are Chuck and Kit Ramsey. They're requesting to reconstruct the entry to the front of the residence. They want to remove the old shingles and replace with different shingles. They would like to remove all the windows and replace with new windows to the house. And in addition, they want to paint the brick to a color that's going to match the house with the shingles and the trim. This property is about midway on the east side of Park Circle, going away, excuse me, from East Main Street. The house is built in 1950 in a ranch-style type of architecture, has a brick veneer. It's not located in the East Main Street Historic District of the National Register of Historic Places. It's only in the East Main Street Historic Zone. So contrary, the first house that we looked at was a contributing structure to the district that it's in. This house was not in either one of the districts, so it's just in our local historic zone. Over the years, the weather has not been kind to the wooden features of the house that weren't maintained properly. The gable on the front of the house, in addition to the columns, they have deteriorated quite a bit. So while the applicants are wanting to reconstruct that entryway, they would like to also center the door with some side lights and some windows on the front of the house. Under the porch, instead of the vertical siding that they proposed to, that is the vertical, they proposed to have horizontal hardy plank siding under the gable, under the porch. In the gable portion of the residence, they also want to use a hardy shake shingle. And I think there's some drawings and pictures in your agenda items that point this out. All the windows that are on the house are going to be replaced with new Marvin-type windows. They'll have fewer grids than the existing windows they'll show, that'll be showing. The existing roof shingles, they're going to be replaced with the new roof timberline slate color-type shingle. And because of the mortar in between the brick and, of the house, it's become somewhat discolored, and what they'd like to do is paint the brick of the house to match the trim that's going to be, you know, remodeled with the house. And they've chosen a moth gray. Both the bricks and the hardy shakes that are under the gable, they'll be painted the same color. Color sample, I have some pictures that I can, that I'll pass out that shows some houses in the historic zone that have been painted, the bricks that have been painted, and I'll include the color sample of the trim that they're talking about. I don't see them in the audience, but if you have any questions for me on the, on this property, I'll be happy to answer them. Let me pass these out here real quick.
Okay, Robert, while you're passing it out, so the porch had original columns, and because right now, the picture of the house, the columns are all gone. So the columns that they're going to be replacing them by are what was on the house originally?
Yeah, they're going to replace the columns. I think from what I gather from the workers out there, that the columns are going to be slightly larger than what's shown on the picture, so they'll be a little bit more hardy or broad than the ones that are shown on the, in the drawing.
Well, that drawing's not to scale enough, so that's a little bit difficult to decide.
Yeah, and they are, they are drawing a little bit larger than what the photos show that you have being passed around. They're doing some work out there now, as you can see in the photo, and I checked with the building and codes department. What they're doing right now is maintenance to the, to the trim, and to everything else out there right now. They haven't pulled the door or the windows, or done any modifications. I told them, before you do any modifications, you'll have to come before the historic commission and let us take a look at it. So a lot of, what you see in that photo is maintenance, just routine maintenance, when they get to the parts of the windows and the doors and the.
So there were two columns on each side, though, originally.
There's a photograph.
Does it show it?
And are you saying, Robert, that the new columns will be the same?
A little bit thicker.
We don't really know what the columns are going to look like, though.
Well, they're going to.
Detail-wise, I'm just looking at this drawing, which is, there's also, there's a window there on the front that's not shown here either. I don't know whether the scale of the drawing's off, but there's three windows on the right-hand side of the porch.
Right. They want to, they want to take all that out, put the door in the center, and have the side lights on each side of the.
No, but there are three windows on the.
In the sketch, we have.
No, they don't show two windows in the sketch. There are actually three windows to the right, out between the end of the existing porch and the end of the house.
Those, those three windows will still remain. The windows under the porch, they're going to do away with and just have everything centered.
But I think Paul's point is, in the sketch we're given, they're only showing two windows.
Two, yeah, right.
And so what else is not? What else is different?
To my knowledge, that's about the only thing that's not shown. They should have shown three windows on that one side. They didn't, they showed two.
Well, you know, the only thing we've got to go by is what they give us.
That's right.
I have driven by and looked at the house, and I think certainly that what they're doing is an improvement. I mean, I understand why they would want to change the door configuration, and I don't have a problem with that. And the columns that were in the, that were there, that are appeared in that photograph, look fine to the scale of the house, but these, if the columns are going to put on there, any, are even close to what they represented in this drawing, then the porch is going to be the monumental feature of the house. I'm not sure that, I would like to have seen something a little more specific about that, because I don't know if this is approved as submitted. I don't know what we've locked them in to do column-wise.
Well, they didn't give me an exact eight, if it's going to be an eight-inch column, or 10-inch column, or 12-inch column. I don't know that. And I, and the workers out there didn't know exactly what the width were. I would have thought that the applicants would have been here for the meeting. I mentioned it to them.
It's hard to tell from the photograph, but it looks like the original columns had, there was three on the right side anyways, and in the way the left side is, the way the photograph was taken, it's hard to say, unless that is something else. Do we know whether there was two or three columns on the original?
You know, I was looking at that, and I don't know if there's one hidden behind that, the one on the front. I don't know.
Well.
When I went out to take a picture, the columns are already gone, so I don't know, and I haven't talked to them.
Did they not, did they start their work without a building permit?
Well, like I was saying, they're doing some maintenance on the house, which doesn't require a permit, a building permit, but when they get to the point of moving the door at the entry, replacing the windows, doing the columns, putting back the columns, that's when they're going to have to, you know, get the certificate of occupancy, and that's what they need permission from the historic commission for. It's doing routine maintenance, you don't need a building permit.
I understand. I didn't know where the draw the line on what's routine maintenance.
Yeah. I checked with the building and codes department. They said that you can do some things to a house without building permits, as long as, if you start doing modifications, the historic commission wants to know about it, and that's why they're not going to proceed farther than the maintenance part of it.
Well, unfortunately, the Ramseys are not here, and there's a number of concerns, and besides the number of concerns, there's things that are not, dimension-wise, we're not, not sure of it, like the columns. And I'd also like to talk to them personally about an option versus, and there's a lot of painted brick in our historic zones, so there's, if they want to paint it, there's not much we can do. But, you know, painting requires repainting, and on one of the houses, at 112 South Manny, we were going to paint that also, but we had that totally re-tucked and the bricks cleaned, and I'm really glad I went that way. So I'd like to be able to at least talk that option with the Ramseys.
Sure.
To let them know there is another option, because once you do it, once you re-tuck and you clean the brick, then you don't have to deal with it.
Yeah.
But the painting is, I don't care, I doubt whether there's a paint that's going to last forever without repainting brick. So I think that we need to postpone this till next month. It's my opinion anyways, because we don't know the size of the columns. I would also like to talk about why they're going from six panes to four panes on the windows. And I'm not sure historically, Paul, what impact that has. Unfortunately, Mr. Thompson's not here today. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Is this a, in the historic, in the, just the historic zone?
Historic zone only.
Is it shown, is it listed as a contributing building?
Well, in historic zone, we don't have contributing buildings, or in the district, in the national register districts, we have contributing structures and non-contributing structures.
Okay.
But this isn't in one of those districts. This is just in the city's historic zone.
But they're all, I mean, all that are within the zone are contributing to the zone.
To the historic zone, that's right.
I understand. Well, generally speaking, I appreciate what they're doing to the house. I don't know that I'm going to object to the overall idea that they have, but I share the chairman's feelings. I think it would have been, I think had they been here that.
We could answer some questions, yeah.
We could get some questions answered and move along with it.
Yeah, even if they can't be here, if they, they can have a representative here to answer the questions. Is there any other discussion by any other members? Anybody feel differently?
As far as, you're talking about, you know, cleaning the brick and re.
Tucking it.
Tucking the brick. I think that, I know that in our, in our guidelines for the Historic Zoning Commission, we would rather not have painted brick, we would rather not recommend painting brick. But on the other hand, I think what, I think it's so wonderful that somebody has bought that house that was probably the least attractive house on that street, and that they're, they're going to give it some attention. The thing that concerns me, as you and Paul have mentioned, is that we have a sketch here that doesn't look like what the house looks like, and so I have questions about the columns ending up being, I think we've gotten in trouble before when we've given the go-ahead, when we haven't had specific drawings to scale, or we've left things up in the air that we shouldn't have. And so I think, I think it would be great if we could talk to them, or their representative.
I have a motion.
Is the only alternative, though, to move this one month? Is that what it would be, to, they would have to wait a month?
Well, unless we, unless we have a. Well, unless we, uh, unless we have a special meeting, I know that, uh, they, I believe they were wanting, uh, to get moving on it, and that's why I'm a little surprised why they weren't, but they didn't show up at the meeting. Uh, we can have a special meeting, provided we give them some notice to the newspaper and, uh, and we talk, I talked to the chairman, he, he agrees, or...
Well, I'm not suggesting a special meeting, I'm just, my question was, I guess that we only have another, want, a meeting once a month, so...
Right.
Um, I didn't know if there was anything on this list that we could approve for them, so they could be doing something rather than just totally, of course, they're not here, so I don't know, you know, if they wanna proceed with the roof or...
Well, they're working on the house. I mean, there's workers, I mean, I'm not sure where the applicants are, but I know that, I was out there a week ago, and, and they were, they were doing work on the porch, so I, when I took the pictures.
They've done the repair work on the, the wood repair on the porch, um, and I, and I, we, we can, I'm, have no problem with the re-roofing it and rebuilding the chimneys and, uh...
I don't think there's any chimneys on this one.
The gable.
Oh, the gable.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't have any problem with what they're proposing to do there, I'm just concerned about the, how this porch is gonna look in the final analysis, is, so I don't know whether we can do a partial approval that would allow them to do...
Sure, you can...
We can obviously do, we can, we can do a motion to approve portions of this if we're not comfortable with all of it.
Well, I agree with you all about the porch, so, but, and I just don't know what your feelings are on the roof. I wouldn't mind giving them approval for the roof, everybody agrees with that, and, and that way they can be, you know, we're holding, they go to month, they're gonna have to wait for approval on the porch, but at least they can be doing the roof and...
Do we know if the windows are wood windows? That's another thing that we don't know.
They're marvin windows, uh, and I think those are, I wanna say, I don't know if they're really wood, they may be vinyl overwood, but I don't have a brochure of that. We have the drawing.
I don't know, I feel comfortable with the windows, I don't think there's enough detail...
Yeah.
On the windows that I can see. I'm familiar with the roof, with the timberline slate color shingle.
Well, okay. Well, I'm not comfortable with the windows either, and I'm not comfortable with the columns, the hardy plank, uh, on the gable and underneath the roof, I don't have a problem with, and the roof, redoing the roof, I don't have a problem with, so, somebody...
Well, then I'll make that motion, that we allow them to proceed with the roof and the, uh, the hardy board on the, uh...
Gable?
Gable, and then defer, uh, the remaining items till our next, uh, meeting.
Well, you, you wanna add to it the, the door and the side lights?
I don't have any problem with that.
Mm.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
No.
All right, then I'll include that in my motion, the roof, the, the gable and the doors and the side lights, and then defer the remaining items, the windows and the porch.
And the columns. Okay.
I second that motion.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Any not in favor? That motion carries, thank you. Brenda, did you get that? Okay. Okay, Robert, any other business to cover for today?
Okay, at, at last, uh, special meeting we had a week ago, uh, I think y'all gave some direction to, uh, city attorney about which way that we'd like to proceed with, uh, with trying to handle the problems that we have in, in a historic zone with jurisdiction and the right, city's right-of-way. Uh, she's come up with, uh, a proposed amendment about this, and I'll be happy to, uh, hand it out and let y'all look at it, and, uh, she should be here shortly to, uh...
Great, thank you.
To discuss that with you.
Do we know if she's on the way?
Uh, yes, uh, Ms. McGannon wanted to be here to discuss this with the commission, and she is on her way, and I'll hand out what has been drafted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Susan.
I just made the introductions. Uh, we're ready for you.
Okay, good. Just in time delivery of legal services at Congress. It's nice to be back with you again so soon. Um, the document that you were given represents my, um, first, but hopefully still best, attempt to reflect the discussions that we had at your special meeting last week about proposed changes to the city ordinances you might want to recommend to, um, make permanent the consultation process that the city manager committed, uh, to you that he would undertake, since that was the desire of the, uh, commission. It might be easier so that the viewing audience can follow along if I just read it and then made some comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, and my suggestion was that it should be put in the zoning ordinance, in the section that deals with the historic district, because that section talks about various functions of this commission, and it would be to insert a new subsection entitled "Consideration of Changes to Public Property." In any non-emergency situation where the removal, alteration, or demolition of any public or utility improvement, infrastructure, or object, including landscaping, existing on public property or within a public right-of-way or easement within the historic district is planned, or when the addition or construction of a public or utility improvement, infrastructure or object, including landscaping, on public property or within a public right-of-way or easement in the historic district is planned, the government, utility, or person planning such removal, alteration, demolition, addition, or construction shall afford the Historic Zoning Commission an opportunity to review and provide written comments on such proposed action prior to its initiation. Prior consultation shall not be required for maintenance or repair of an existing public or utility improvement, infrastructure, or object, including landscaping, which was, which does not materially change its size, appearance, or function, nor for changes below the surface of any public street or easement. Consultation may be requested or provided, even if it is not required as herein specified. So, that's the proposed text. The goal was to try to think of everything that would be public property or public control through an easement, um, that would not be on a traditional lot, that would be in the historic district, and would try to deal with changes to what was there or additions to what was there, and would call for consultation before there was a change, but would not unduly impede the government if there was an emergency situation, or if you were talking about something that was subsurface, whether the water and sewer department changes the line from six inches to 10 inches, you know, under the road isn't going to have an impact on the historic district's appearance and ambiance and, and whatnot. So, it was intended to do those things and require consultation in advance for those, but it was intended to make explicit the ability of the, um, a government or utility to come to the commission and ask for input, even if something wasn't specifically required. Um, the city manager had mentioned, for example, trying to come to the commission with various issues that might be in the vicinity of the historic district, um, with a streetscape plan to try and get input, even if it wasn't going to be, you know, immediately in the district. So, that was why I wanted to get a little bit outside the district as an option, but, but not as a requirement, but to add as a requirement, uh, the prior consultation for all of the items that I listed, 'cause that's what I had understood, uh, the, the preferred direction of the commission to be from last week. Um, so that's what I was trying to do, and now you can tell me how close I came to what you wanted.
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there last week, so, but this, to me, um, sounds sufficient. I was concerned about, uh, the word utility, is, is AT&amp;T consider themselves a utility?
They're a utility, and one of the things that, um, uh, we have to deal with, um, when we are writing ordinances, is the fact that you can't do ex post facto laws that change the terms of their contract, change the terms of their franchise, or change state law, we don't have the power to control that. Um, so, um, AT&amp;T's, for example, right to do certain things under state law with its state franchise, um, is not going to be controlled by this, but the fact that consultation should occur is something that hopefully will increase the likelihood that it will, but I can't tell you that anything you recommend or the city council adopts is going to control that, because when the legislature created the state franchise and AT&amp;T took it, it took away some local power, there's just no way to hide that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments?
I was just gonna ask, uh, the, and I think you explained this, the last sentence that says consultation may be requested or provided, even if it's not required, that's what you meant when you used the example of the city manager...
Yes.
...wanting to come to us?
Yes.
Is that, as opposed to a situation where, um, that's not intended to give us the right to ask somebody to come in?
Well, um, I think no one, you can always issue an invitation. Uh, you may not be able to compel someone to attend, but you can always issue an invitation. Um, that's what, you know, we talked at the special meeting about whether it would be appropriate or desirable for this, uh, body to make suggestions about public infrastructure that may not be, um, required. For example, and, and this is what I can think of very quickly, if the city decided it was going to use porous pavement for, uh, environmental purposes in other parts of the city, um, this group might wanna say, even though the environment is good, um, we think it should be traditional asphalt in the historic district, even though, um, you know, this, this section about it wouldn't be changing a street surface, normally a street surface, uh, pay, you know, asphalt wouldn't be subject for which consultation was required.
Right.
You might want to volunteer and say, uh, we don't think you should do that here, leave the street surface the way it is. Now, that's not a plan, I don't think that's gonna happen, I'm just trying to give an illustrative example of why you might want to volunteer something for which consultation was not required.
Okay.
Asphalting the street consultation would not be required, but you might want to put in your two cents' worth even when consultation was not required. So, it was intended to leave the door open for others to come to you when not required to do so, and for you to volunteer to them when not required to do so. It, it was, in one sense, you could almost say it's redundant, because that sort of flexibility should be inherent, but, um, I thought it, it might help to distinguish between those times when consultation was required and when it was suggested, either by you or by others.
I have a question, Ms. McGannon. You know, we talked, um, last week about who we did want to include in, in seeking our advice and our consultation, and so, please tell me who this, who this does cover, who this does involve? We're asking the city. Uh, you know, we talked about the water department, we talked about, uh, if, if, uh, I think Mr. Backlund said, what about stop signs, you know, or what if they decided to put decorative stop signs in the, in the historic district?
Mm-hmm.
Who are we addressing this to specifically?
Um, it's, it's not, um, addressed to an individual or entity, it's based on the, um, non-private-owned nature of both the property and the object, so, uh, this is intended to reach, uh, all of the utility entities.
Okay.
Um, water, sewer, electric, um, uh, the telecommu-, telecommunications entities, you know, the cable company, the telephone provider, the city, the county, the state, the federal government, it's intended to reach everybody.
Okay.
Um, as you know, from, from your service, uh, the, um, question of complying, compliance, when you have a, a different, um, higher up the ladder government, say, say the federal government, you know, they might not, uh, come just because we say they should, you've got sovereign immunity questions, but it's intended to make a comprehensive statement. You already had comprehensive authority over private property in the district, and this is intended to be a comprehensive consultation process over non-privately-owned property in the district. That, that's the intended scope. Um, how successful it will be depends in part on others asserting their legal defenses not to participate.
Okay, thank you.
I feel like that where it says the government, utility, or person planning such a project, and I think being specific about removal, alteration, demolition, as opposed to the word undertaking, I, I think that's helpful. I think, I felt like the goal, that our goal was to somehow keep our government, local government, since we're part of the local government, that the, the interest was in asking the departments of the government that we represent as well to work with us and give us an opportunity to have input prior to the time that something's already done. Uh, and, and whether we get, uh, the likelihood of getting, uh, AT&amp;T to do anything that anybody wants them to do, uh, regardless of whether it's the city government or private individual, is not very, not very likely, it's worth a shot, but, uh, I, I think that this accomplishes, it actually accomplishes a little bit more than, than I personally had envisioned in doing it, and I also think that, uh, written as it is, I would hope that the planning commission, uh, would, would see this as a positive move and would agree to, to do this. I, I think this is, uh, very well crafted.
Thank you. It, it was an attempt to represent what you said, um, rather than, um, you know, a particular position that, that we were advocating, but we'll certainly, um, you know, if you want, I realize you just got it this afternoon, it was, it was just finalized this afternoon, um, if you want to, uh, study on it for the next meeting, or if you feel you're ready to, um, take a, a vote and recommend it, uh, to the planning commission for consideration, you know, whatever you feel you're ready to do will certainly work with you, um, you know, in, in moving the process forward.
What I would like to do, uh, Ms. Susan, is, um, since we have four of our members not here today, is to, Robert and Brenda, get a copy in their hands, and then, um, have them contact you personally if they have any questions, and, and at that particular point, then our next meeting, we can...
and recommend it to the planning commission for consideration, you know, whatever you feel you're ready to do will certainly work with you, you know, in moving the process forward.
What I would like to do, Mrs. Susan, is, since we have four of our members not here today, is to Robert and Brenda get a copy in their hands, and then have them contact you personally if they have any questions. And at that particular point, then our next meeting, we can submit a motion for approval of this.
Ms. McGannon, let me ask you a question just procedurally. Are we going to make our recommendation to the planning commission or city council?
Well, it's really both, because it will be part of the zoning ordinance. It would need, as a matter of course, to go to the planning commission, but you'd really, I think a motion would be to ask both bodies to adopt it.
So it'll go to the planning commission, then from the planning commission, make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council will vote on it?
Right, and, you know, the planning commission has to take a position on it, but if, for example, hypothetically, the planning commission said no, you know, you could still say, we want it to go to the city council, even if the planning commission doesn't like it.
Exactly. Now, does, can the planning commission modify this if it needs to be?
They can suggest changes to the city council, so that when it was presented to the city council, the city council would have a, this is what Historic Zoning Commission said, this is what the planning commission said, you city council are the decision-makers.
And the reason for my question, David, is if we can move this along, and I know we've got four members that aren't here, or three, if we could get their comments prior to planning commission approval, then any changes they may want to say, I'm just throwing things out to keep it moving, if any changes they want to see, they could be adopted at planning commission level?
Well, you, again, we'll work with you either way. You know, the city manager, I think, was very explicit about his commitment, and as we've just discussed, we can't necessarily control, you know, what others will do. So the area of greatest concern, I think, and certainly in the short run, you know, may be net without this, but that's up to you, whether you want to go forward today or not.
Yeah, my, I hate to delay anything, but my main concern is the chair and the vice chair, both not here today, so...
Yeah, and the vice chair and Mr. Backland, who's not here today, you know, offered things at the meeting last week, and so I really think they should be able to digest this.
I would think we, as Susan mentioned, that we have, have these, the city manager's attention. I don't think he's going to go and start anything until he consults with us, so I'd feel comfortable in doing that, instead of, hey, everybody?
That's fine with me.
And I should share, just in the interest of full disclosure, while that's happening, this will give, I wanted to present it to you first to see if it came close to what you wanted. It has not been shared with the water and sewer director, or the city engineer, or the city manager. They haven't seen it, you know, and they may, this would give them a chance, if they wanted to make some comments to influence your recommendation, that would give them a chance to do that.
Okay, well, thank you very much for all the hours and working with us to make this happen. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Glad to do it.
I'll get this out to the, to the commission members immediately and let them have a chance to look at it, and I'm sure they'll have some comments at the next meeting.
Is there any other business, Robert?
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Motion adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan.